Is David here?
Yeah, just. We, you can start your meeting, but obviously we don't have a quorum for the planning board.
Yeah, we're not going to open that meeting until after. Okay. Okay, good. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Select Board, Monday, January 8th, 2024, Wacoite Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass., 02649. Broadcast live on the local cable, Channel 8. Stream live on the town Mashpee website. The meeting is 6:31. I'd like to convene the meeting in open session. Start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Can I have a moment of silence, please? All right, thank you. My mic is hot, so. We've been at discussion and approval of the following minutes, Monday, December 18th, 2023, regular session.
No move.
Second.
I have a first and I have a second. Any discussion? Not hearing any. Mr. Whedon?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
And Tom?
Yeah.
All right. And I'm a yes. Okay, appointments and hearings, 6:35, which is the poll hearing, petition of number Mass. 2023-50 Verizon, New England Inc., and N-Star Electric Company, doing business as EverSource Energy, placed new facilities on Jac- uh, Jacobin Road, Mashpee, Mass.
John, we do have a representative from Verizon here to speak to any questions you might have.
Does anybody in the, have any, anybody have any questions? Pretty standard.
To make a motion to close, this is public hearing?
It's a public hearing. I don't know if we have anybody in the audience here for that, other than Verizon.
Anybody?
Would you like me to just introduce and speak to it?
Sure. One second, Tom. We're just gonna have him speak to it.
I made the trip. I might as well say hello. Good evening, Don Bonner for Verizon. This pole on Jacobin Road is, the purpose of it, there's a new development right there at the corner, and the wire is very low. It's about 10 feet off the ground, which was fine when it was woods before, but now it's, it's not safe. So, the span between the two existing poles is over 200 feet, which is pretty long. So they're putting a pole right in the middle, and they're gonna lift the, lift the wires up to a safer height, so that the new people at the new houses can get into the driveways and get a moving truck in there.
Okay. Obviously, that, great explanation and short, right to the point. So, other than that, anybody? Good.
A motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, now, motion.
All right. Two seconds to close. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes.
Tom, all right, we have you unanimous to close the public hearing. Can I have a motion to approve?
A motion to approve.
Second.
All right. First and I have a second. Any discussion? Not hearing any.
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
And Tom?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're all set.
Unanimous, all set?
Thank you, folks.
Congrats. Thanks for making the trip in.
Pleasure.
Discussion and approval of sending a letter of support to the Cape Commission, Cape Cod Commission, with regard to the update to the Joint Base Cape Cod Master Plan, and to request Mashpee's participation in the project. Do you have a draft in front of everybody? In front of us? And it's basically just, you know, hopefully we want to be at the table and, with any discussions. Does anybody have any questions with the letter that's in front of us?
Mr. Chair. I, I think this is really important to do, and I appreciate the letter. I think that there might be some rewording, possible rewording to do in the next to the last paragraph, just not to convey that we support the updated plan, but rather we support an update, the proposed update. So, as not to confuse with a plan that's being submitted that we're supporting, differentiating it, that we support that it's being updated and we want to be included.
Fair.
So there's just, it's just a little unclear.
So, you want to just, I mean, you want to, um, are you talking about the endorsing of the, of the proposal, the proposed?
We, we want, yes, we want to, we want to endorse a proposed update, but we don't want to endorse a particular plan. I think the town manager has something to add.
Okay.
I, I would agree. This looks like a cob lunch. You know, we stand united, so I share that same concerns.
Mr. Collins?
I did receive today from DNR a memo. Obviously, this was received today after a conversation earlier this morning, and on behalf of the Mashpee Department of Natural Resources, we express our wholehearted support for the proposed update to the Joint Base Cape Cod Master Plan by the Cape Cod Commission, recognizing the significance of strategic planning for the future of Joint Base and the broader community. We emphasize the importance of a comprehensive and forward-thinking master plan. I would be more than happy to share this with the board, but there are some concerns regarding PFAS that probably need to be incorporated into this. And also, I received a memo after a discussion earlier today with the health agent, and again, the support for the inclusion of any plans for the restoration of the surface waters, specifically a Schumett Pond and Johns Pond, has to be included. So, I, I understand the importance of this, but I think if the board could just hit pause long enough for me to get some more information that might be relevant to the letter, I, I would just respectfully request that you table this tonight and take no action.
Motion to table the approval of the support letter?
Second.
For us a second. Any discussion? Not hearing any. David?
Yes.
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 Tom?
Yeah. Yeah.
And I'm a yes. Makes sense. Make it a little more comprehensive and inclusive, so. It's great. Thank you, Mr. Collins. Actually, it's like, I have a comment. Ken DeBroski?
Okay, Ken DeBroski, three Grayville Land Link, and shockingly, I'm not here to talk about inequities in the appraisal system. Though I could talk about that, but we're gonna skip that tonight. Show of hands, who knows about the Massachusetts Senior Credit Circuit, Senior Circuit Breaker Tax Credit? You do?
Yeah.
Okay. I wasn't aware of it. I'm not sure everybody else. Basically, I mean, ju- just so everybody does know, basically, it's available to the over 65 population, and basically what it does, if 10, you calculate your gross income, and if your real estate taxes plus half of your water and sewer fees exceed 10% of your gross income, you get a refundable tax credit. Okay, and the cool thing about that, I mean, it's maxed out at $25.90 next year, but, and there are income limitations, and there's an assessed value limitation that's really high. It's over a million bucks. But the cool thing about it, it's a refundable tax credit, and it's treated as part of your tax return. So if you, if you weren't aware of it, and you find out that you qualified this year, you can file amended returns for three years back, depending upon when you filed your return. So, again, I didn't, I wasn't aware of this, so I didn't know how many other people were worried about, were aware of it. You do have to file a Schedule CB on your tax return, and it also applies to renters, and the threshold for renters, instead of your property taxes, it's 25% of your rent. So, again, I don't know how many people would qualify, but it's something that they should take a look at. I don't know if TurboTax does this for you or not, but, you know, when you're doing your taxes this year, just be aware of it.
Thanks for the information. Lynn Barbie?
Lynn Barbie, Surf Drive. My comments are related to the housing production plan. I've been trying to participate in giving feedback with that, and I just had an opportunity to glance at the Cape Cod Commission's proposed plan, and I was concerned that the Cape Cod Commission's draft really doesn't talk about environmental impact, and that, I mean, you can't talk about housing without talking about our environment. And I just want to say, I think so far, we've done a really good job in our housing production plan, making sure that that factor is included in all of the comments and the, the ideas and the changes that we'd like to make in our housing production plan, because, and I hope that, once we're done with ours, that we can pass that on to the Cape Cod Commission, so that they don't, because they have Mashpee as, as an example there, and there's really only one tiny reference to searing and no other reference to environmental impact, and that's concerning to me. I'm sure we're not the only ones that are concerned about that. But I, I, I think it's, you know, we have a lot of work to do with the housing production plan, but it's so far, we've done a really good job, and I want to congratulate Evan and the entire planning board in taking this on. Good luck for the rest of you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Colton?
Hello, Colton Atkinson, 112 Algonquin. I wanted to voice support for the housing production plan changes that the planning board made at their last meeting. I think it's a good balance between the increased development that we need to meet our housing plans and get affordable housing for the community, and balancing that with the impact to the environment that it'll have. I think the increased missing middle housing that it will provide for will help alleviate the hous- or the searing costs by spreading the cost to more people and reduce the impact on the trees that will have to be cut down for further development and other environmental impacts.
Thank you, Colton. That's, oh yeah, for public comment. Next up is convene the joint meeting with the planning board? Huh?
We have three, we have four.
So I don't, I don't think we have to close, close our meeting. I think we just joined the planning board.
They convene theirs.
Convenes.
Yes. Chair tapped to convene it?
Yes. It's January 7th?
8th.
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 2024, and I, as chair of the planning board, convene our joint select board meeting and planning board meeting tonight in the Wacoite Room, Mashpee, Mass.
Great.
Perfect timing, Dennis.
Hey, Dennis.
We just convened the meeting.
We waited for you got, so you got here.
I was ready to watch the selfie, it's that way.
Evan, you wanna start us off?
Might as well start off. Mr. Chair, thank you for the time on your agenda tonight. I know after our first presentation of the draft plan, or at least the strategies contained in the plan, there was a hunger for a larger opportunity to dive in to some of the questions and concerns and comments relative to that initial draft. Since that time, the draft has been discussed in some detail with the members of the planning board. Subsequently, our last joint meeting, I had spent some time with our consultant evaluating much of the community engagement, some of the survey work, both for the housing production plan process and the local comprehensive planning process, really just to make sure that we were analyzing the data consistently and correctly with regard to the strategies that were related to the community engagement. I had gotten the sense after our last meeting that we were, that we might not be as close as I think that we are. And, so in your packets tonight, you should have all been provided a memo from me to you outlining the changes that were contemplated by the planning board with a specific focus on strategy number seven, which is relatively, specifically related to zoning strategies to consider to meet the housing needs that have been defined in the plan, and a few other strategies as well that the, the planning board wanted modified. The changes, as they're enumerated in the memo, are the totality of the changes contemplated by the planning board at this time. And so, they should be relatively self-explanatory. So, much of the changes that are there are relatively simple, in that there were, you know, general semantic and verbiage choices that needed to change. Some of the strategies were eliminated and merged with others, all with the goal of being as consistent as is possible with the findings of our survey work and the findings of our community engagement work. And as presented to you, I feel strongly that we are presenting strategies within the plan that will be consistent with that, with that vision, with that work, and will be effective at addressing the housing needs that are defined in the plan, both, you know, specifically for the, the production of housing that would be included on our subsidized housing inventory, so housing restricted for households earning 80% or less of the area of family median income, and then also as for those strategies that would, that are geared towards those income-earning households that exceed that 80% threshold, as the needs assessment clearly defines a growing need and concern to address that income level within our local population. So I, if there's, I have nothing else to offer at this time. I'm here to really answer questions and open up the floor, if you're willing, Mr. Chair, to any comments by the planning board, if they wanted to elaborate on some of the changes that we had contemplated, or respond to any questions members of the select board may have.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I don't know if you want to.
Start going down the line.
You want to just kind of like go through the strategy of seven, and then if we can move on, and then, if there's something we didn't touch?
Strategy seven, it, the, the topic is explore zoning mechanisms for increasing options for housing choice outside of the town's current open space incentive development bylaw. Potential options to consider include, if you take a look at the strategies, put, if you would, put page 58 of the draft, housing production, in front of you, so you know where this is coming from.
And Karen, if I may, so the, the section before, strategy, I think, six is about affordable housing, and the planning board had no comments on that, that zone. Strategy seven is more about, like, the non-deed restricted units.
Well, I was thinking, if, because if we can go through where there's a lot of redlined, go through these, you know, strategy seven, strategy eight, and everything that's on these documents?
Right.
And then we can cover anything that's not on here, then we'll, right?
Yeah, okay. So the first one in the red are the changes that we made from that first, let's call it 7A. The original was establishing overlay districts in areas with suitable infrastructure or planned infrastructure that would allow townhouses or multifamily buildings. So, we changed that to conventional zoning overlay districts, so there's no ambiguity there, or form-based code overlay districts if desired, in developed areas, we know what that means, with suitable infrastructure or planned infrastructure that would allow townhouses and/or multifamily buildings commonly identified as building types in the, quote, "missing middle." So that kind of clarifies a little bit that first point. Any questions on that? You want to go through it first and then come back?
Do you want, do you want questions as we go?
Yeah, I mean, if.
Maybe we should respond as we go.
Thought is, I mean, it's already redlined, so if, does anybody have, like, the first bullet point, is this, these, does anybody have any recommendations or changes or, yeah?
I do. Thank you, thank you. One of the concerns, first of all, thank you for all your hard work on this, both the planning board, Evan, and the whole, and yes, but Alex, yes, and the Barrett Group, the whole Barrett Group. I think the document itself is going to be useful throughout for planning, and I appreciate how thorough it is, so I want to say that before I suggest any changes. One question I have here, a suggested change, is, it says suitable infrastructure, and it's not clear to me that suitable infrastructure also refers to wastewater treatment, and I think it needs to. And I'm concerned about or planned infrastructure, because planned infrastructure can mean anything. I mean, it could be planned 10 years out, 20 years out. So I'm wondering if there's a way we could delete planned infrastructure, and with suitable infrastructure, include wastewater infrastructure.
I'm fine with that.
I have no objection to that. How does the rest of the boards, boards feel? Anyone object to adding that?
Deleting it.
By deleting and changing that?
So what exactly?
Oh, I see.
I would delete or plant infrastructure, and after suitable infrastructure, I would say including wastewater infrastructure.
That makes sense.
Okay, anyone object to that change? Okay, no objection. So we say, we don't have to vote on this, do we?
Go next.
No, we're okay with that, the change. The next one.
So that bullet point were good, right?
That's bullet point good. The next one was deleted and merged with the full, first, you know, this bullet point above, which we just talked about, and you can see what it said. It had said establishing a form-based code overlay district in areas with suitable infrastructure or planned, here it is. So, okay, so that's, no one objects to that, right? Correct?
Right.
Okay. The next one, allowing conversion of existing single-family homes to small multifamily homes by special permit. Special permit, so we know what that means. The only change proposed to this strategy will be included in language relative to parking maximums. Over 80% of the town's housing stock is single-family, and 77% of LCP survey respondents indicated a desire to prioritize redevelopment of existing properties into housing, into housing. It was found to be imprudent to not consider the potential of this strategy. I think it's good.
That's good.
Anybody object to that change?
I, I would only include that, you know, I, I would like to see language that stipulates homes that are eligible for historic preservation are excluded from consideration. So, any homes.
We kept the outside looking good.
I mean, homes that are 100 years old, or over 100 years old, are considered eligible for, as historic properties, and so I wouldn't want those, because they're essential.
Oh, yeah.
Components of the community character. The covenant, the rules of the historic commission, if we did that? Like, we talked about, Evan, about taking a big old mansion and turning it into four apartments with one common door, so it looks like a single-family house.
The only properties in Mashpee, I mean, so we have our historic district, which is more or less from Cotuand Road to the old Mr. Keys along Main Street. The vast majority of properties along Main Street are not 100 years old. I, I would say that absent properties that are included on the National Register of Historic Places, of which I don't believe there are any residential structures in the historic district that are included on the National Register, I would be cautious and include in modifying the action for a condition that doesn't necessarily exist. I guess what I would say, I would caution you against eliminating all of the homes in the historic district from this pathway, considering many of the lots in the historic district are nearly two acres in size, or in size or in excess of two acres in size, and actually provide opportunities for this type of conversion.
Would you, would you want to say, except for homes on the historic register, even though you can't think of any now, but there might be one?
I would have no issues with such an inclusion.
Well, the, the historic register, if they're listed on the historic register, then they've been deemed eligible and applied for that designation, whereas homes that are 100 years old may qualify, but they haven't been brought forward.
I mean, I suppose what I would say, David, is that all of the architectural and design requirements of any historic, historically regulated structure would need to be accommodated and complied with. So I feel like the inclusion of such language would limit your opportunity for creating the housing that it, that it's intended, without any substantive shift in the existing condition for historic preservation.
Here, you want to try something?
I just wanted to ask, David, was there a house in particular? Are there some houses in particular that you, you have in mind that?
Well, one that comes to mind is the one down there, essentially across from the New Seabury entrance, the Nathan.
Horatio Amos House.
Horatio Amos House, correct. You know, that one's a historic, could be on the register, I think. I don't know that it is. I think it's on the state.
It is identified as eligible.
And so, that's, that's kind of an example of my concern.
I suppose I would just want, like, because again, if, if the, if the use were to be changed, and the property were to be converted into multiple units, using that site as a specific example, again, all of the architectural components and requirements of any listing on the National Register would, would, would need be complied with. So I guess I just don't understand the concern with the conversion on that specific property.
Well, David, could you answer this question? Would you be, are you, do you know if you are allowed to take something that is on the historic register and turn it into three apartments, four apartments?
There's nothing I'm aware of that would prevent it. The regulation of historical structures generally is, is regulating architectural components, not necessarily uses.
This is just a plan, right? So we can, we can have some flexible language in there. I think that if we just add, without the loss of any historic resources, then we can, we can, because this would be a zoning bylaw, right? So you would be able to, we would be able to fine-tune it at that time. If we just said, allow conversion of existing single-family homes to small multifamily homes by special permit without the loss of any historic resources.
I, I'd be amicable to that.
Because it's just a plan, and all of this will, when it becomes more detailed and actually regulatory, it'll come back for a more detailed review.
I'm agreeable.
Okay.
That's fine.
Does anybody disagree? Everyone is in agreement?
All right.
Okay, pass that.
I have one other, just, this is a question. So do we need to say, in compliance with flow-neutral bylaw?
It's implicit, but it can be stated.
Thank you.
Let's state it, then.
Thank you.
All right.
In compliance with which flow bylaw, the current flow bylaw?
Yes, the flow-neutral bylaw that we build by.
So, if I understand that, right, that would mean if it was, if it was a, a lot that could have four bedrooms, it could, it could still have four bedrooms, but it couldn't have five?
Right.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's fine. I mean, ultimately, it's about creating smaller units, and we are still going to be bound by the requirements of flow-neutral, so there's really no issue with specifying it.
By adding that, she's talking about current flow bylaw?
Mm-hmm.
That's, that could be in conflict with strategy 19.
Well, I mean, so strategy 19, which we will get to, is going to, it contemplates the initiating a discussion with the sewer commission and board of health relative to modifying the watershed management plan, if necessary to address housing concern. I would say that if the sewer commission and board of health, after years of work and after some data collection relative to the efficacy of the sewer system, determined that there would be an appetite for modifying the CWMP, the flow-neutral bylaw would, would correspond with the. the flow-neutral bylaw would correspond with the updated CWMP. So that should be understood, I guess, at this juncture. But until a modification of the CWMP occurs, we're bound by flow-neutral as it's currently adopted.
In compliance with the existing, not the...
Existing.
Existing flow. Okay, existing as opposed to current.
Sure.
Well, it's the same.
Anybody have objection to that change? Okay, pass. Okay. This was, the next one was deleted. Allowing two-family homes by right in residential districts. I think we had a lot of opposition to that, myself included. So that's gone. And bullet one will keep the door open to explore allowing additional housing types through town via overlay districts. Did anybody want that? Housing by right, understand, no special permit, just go in and get your application.
Not in this five-year time period.
Okay. This is a five-year plan.
Right.
Yes.
So everybody's good as read, as written?
Yes.
Okay, next one.
Amending the town's cluster development bylaw to allow additional residents used beyond what is allowed in the underlying zoning. No changes. This marries open space preservation goals with the goal of diversifying the housing stock. That's a good one, right? Is any...
So I think what that does is in some areas, it would allow for multifamily housing under a cluster subdivision. You know, all those cluster subdivisions we always got were single-family homes. This would allow one where it was like a row of townhouses.
This, this, we go to number eight on page 59. And the original was conduct an analysis of billable residential land and consider reducing dimensional requirements in appropriate areas to better match the density on the ground. A lot of pushback from many of us on reducing dimensional requirements. So we've changed, so it's been changed to conduct an analysis of residential parcels with inadequate land area or frontage to assess the potential of a starter home slash affordable home overlay zoning bylaw. You know, maybe we'd make different concessions for an affordable home, because this, this production plan encompasses not just affordable housing, but all housing. I thought it was just going to be affordable housing, but that's not the case. Any objections to the change?
Everyone's good with that one, right?
Good with that, Dale?
Yes.
Dale changed my mind on that one.
All right.
Okay. Nine, encourage, delete infill. Encourage the redevelopment of underutilized commercial properties to allow mixed-use development that meets design standards and includes affordable and mixed-income housing. Deletion of infill only. Any objection to that change? No objection? All good? Okay. Strategy 10, consider reducing parking requirements, particularly for multifamily development, to reduce impervious surface and lower development costs. When they talk about impervious services, for somebody who might not know, we're talking about asphalt and things like that versus pervious gravel driveway, right? No changes. That's a good one.
That's a very good one.
All for that?
I have, excuse me, I have a question. So I see that we have Strategy 10 listed here with no change.
Right.
And then I go, so I'm looking on page 59, and then we have Strategy 11, 12, 13, 14. Am I just assuming where some are listed as, here's the strategy and no change, that there is no change to any of the others?
Yes.
So we'll go back to page...
Okay, thank you.
Very good.
So we're going to go through these changes and then if there's something else outside of these recommendations, we'll go back to that.
Page 59, if you look at 11, 12, and 13, and state any objections you have to those particular bullets.
Yeah, we'll go...
Well, we're saying that we're okay with them. The Planning Board's okay with them. So why don't you, you, Slidboard, look at them now and tell us if you're okay with them.
No, what we're going to do is, we're going to keep on going through the recommendations, and then when we're done with these recommendations, then we'll kind of once over if there's any other mistake, any other corrections.
And the reason for that, Michaela, is we focused on the strategies that contemplated zoning changes.
Okay. And again, it was a clar, it was just a question of clarity, not cross...
Okay, so, so right now, we're saying, the Planning Board's saying 11, 12, and 13 are all good strategies.
Madam Chair, may I just make one comment about the parking? When we talk about that, we're not talking about erasing parking requirements. We're talking about a reduction of like two parking, from two parking spots per unit to 1.5 in multifamily housing.
Modification.
Moderate reduction, okay.
Any reduction, I think, is a step in the right direction.
14. Replace the OSID bylaw with a new transfer of development rights bylaw that provides for protection of open space. This retains the spirit of the original bullet, but specifies that transfer of development rights is a tool the town wishes to retain and further explore to incentivize housing production and open space protection. Mr. Town Planner, could you explain why we did this? The OSID was basically devised and written by Mr. Fadala to allow Mashpee Commons to use that, because they had, had a minimum of 20 acres. Wasn't that correct?
Yeah, the current OSID bylaw has relatively high thresholds for access to utilize the tool of transfer of development rights, and its intention was to allow for more housing types, which it does allow for, and to incentivize open space protection by transferring the densities that would otherwise be allowed elsewhere into a project area. The OSID bylaw, though, is complicated in its function, and the thresholds are quite high. So we contemplated a series of audits, if you will, of this bylaw to determine its efficacy and ultimately a consideration of striking it altogether if it's not going to function in the way that it's intended or needed. The Planning Board was quite clear in their wish to retain the spirit of the OSID bylaw, and specifically transfer of development rights as a tool to achieve open space protection and incentivize types of housing production. So this really is, the amended language is more or less consistent with the original bullet, but it's quite clear that the goal would be to retain transfer of development rights as a zoning tool and reevaluate OSID, really its accessibility to developers to actually produce the types of housing it's intended to produce.
And then we're also talking about simplifying the quote "bonus" calculation, which laypeople basically don't understand.
Yes, I mean, ultimately, OSID, I think, needs to be totally reevaluated. And we want to make sure that as a mechanism, transfer of development rights is considered in the future.
When we did that, Mashpee Commons was all far. We got down to, like, if you gave a piece of land near water, you got to build two houses. If you gave a piece of land in the middle of the woods, you got a half-house. They didn't like the way it was set up. After we got, it's been about a year on it. Mashpee Commons, after they, they liked it, they wanted to use it. They didn't want to use it, and it's been sitting there for years. Only one that really could use this, the bylaw, is Mashpee Commons.
So we want to change it so more people could use it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, the good thing about OSID is that, you know, our use table contemplates all the types of housing we don't have but want, but the only mechanism for which it could ever be built is under this particular bylaw, which is what needs to be reevaluated.
Good.
So everyone's good with Strategy 14?
We're good with that.
Right?
Yeah, anyone opposed? Okay, that's good. All right. Strategy 19. I'd like to speak about this at the end when we're done. Engage with the Sewer Commission, Board of Health, and Natural Resources Department as the town prepares for new project phases of the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan to confer on regulatory amendments relating to housing and their potential impact on wastewater management, as well as strategies for prioritizing affordable housing within the flow-neutral bylaw. Did we have one of, did we have this on here? Not exactly. So 19 is a brand-new one, isn't it?
It is. It's in, it's in the draft that was submitted to the Cape Cod Commission for grant compliance purposes, and was discussed on Wednesday. But it, before we added to the document that goes to public comment, we wanted your consensus relative to its inclusion. And as I stated to the Planning Board on Wednesday, I think there is a reality. We are, we are bound by the flow-neutral bylaw until such time as the CWMP is reevaluated. So our opportunities for housing production are limited within the confines of that bylaw. And so if we, what was discussed at the Planning Board was watching the data relative to the wastewater treatment collection system and wastewater treatment facilities efficacy to remove nitrogen and solve our problem. So that if we are making substantial progress as modeled, we could evaluate the potential to modify the CWMP in the future with those authorities specifically for the purposes of affordable housing production. Does that more or less summarize it adequately?
Okay. I cannot vote on this. I cannot say yes on this. But that, I shouldn't, you know, dissuade anyone else from voting on this. How many people understand this, first of all? We can come back to this. Let's come back to this.
I think that other people want to talk about it.
Yes, we want to talk about this. So let's come back to this one. Or do we want to talk about it now?
Talk about it, yeah.
That's pretty much it.
While we're on it, that's...
Okay. All right, on page 44 of the proposed bylaw. Okay, let's just kind of refresh our memories or...
Page 44 of the HPP?
Yeah, the HPP draft. If you don't have it in front of you, I'll read it, the part that's relevant. In May 2021, Mashpee adopted a flow-neutral bylaw to keep future wastewater flows in alignment with the assumptions outlined in the Comprehensive Waste Management, Wastewater Management Plan. Establishing such a bylaw allows the town to seek, this is the key thing, 0% financing through the Clean Water State Revolving Fund. To be eligible for this opportunity, the state requires that communities establish land use controls to limit wastewater flows to the amount authorized under zoning and wastewater regulations as of the date of the approval of the CWMP. Mashpee's Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan included build-out assumptions based upon current zoning and developed land. Thus, to remain eligible for future 0% financing on eligible water pollution abatement projects, any change in wastewater flow assumptions would require an update to the CWMP. That was very disturbing to me, that they'd even contemplated updating it. That means they have to go back, correct me if I'm wrong, we didn't discuss this. You'd have to go back to the Department of Environmental Protection to get permission after we've came up with an update.
That's correct.
All right.
With this, I have a quick question. So I understand it. If we did do that, then does that restrict the 0% financing?
Not if the state accepts it under the appropriate process of a notice of project change. So it wouldn't impact your financing so long as the process was complied with appropriately.
But then you're talking about changing it once you see what the outcome is on the outflow.
The Board, if I remember our conversation appropriately, wanted to determine before contemplating this action that the plant was producing results as intended. And so all I want to say relative to this action is that the housing production plan is required to identify barriers to affordable housing production. The flow-neutral bylaw provides a barrier to the production of housing, and so we should have a strategy to address it. And the strategy contemplated is merely to initiate the discussion with the authorities relative to a CWMP update. It doesn't do anything other than seek to convene those decision-makers relative to that issue.
All right, maybe...
So I would recommend including this action.
Then, then help me out, because I, this was my issue at the Planning Board, and when I saw that, I said, okay, I guess I didn't have any, any clout there at all. But this is what I understand, and tell me where my thinking is wrong. This is supposed to be a five-year plan, correct? Let's assume that Phase 1 of the wastewater plan gets built, the 439 units, okay? And that should be completed, I'm talking to different people who tell me that should be completed around 2025, you know, give or take, whatever. Then we're looking to, we are now looking to pass the $80 million, the new Phase 2, to complete 1,288 units in May, if the town votes, two-thirds vote. Hopefully, we, I think a lot of us want that to happen, because we don't want our town to be a toxic stew. So if we build those, if we, if we get plans to build, the article passes, we would have by approximately 2029, 2,727 houses that would be seored, 439 and 1,288, out of a total of, how many? If you could tell me, how many units do we have in this town right now?
Affordable housing units?
No.
All houses?
Around 10,000.
Okay. So, you know, it's a very small amount with all the other houses, and then we don't have plans to sewer every single area either. So my, my point is this, and I, it's really hard to articulate this, but how can you assess upticking, upgrading the Comprehensive Wastewater Plan when you don't know where you'll reach that critical mass? I mean, why can't we stay where we are with the Comprehensive Wastewater Plan and just build a slow amount, like, build, build the affordable houses? Supposedly, we're supposed to build 37 units every year for 10 years. So we're only talking about five, which would be, by fifth year, we would have built 185 affordable houses, period. And then when five years is up, which would be 2029, we take a look at it again and say, okay, we were okay with the 37 houses, or the 37 for five, each one, you know, 37, 185 houses. But let's just take, take a pause. I've heard that so many times here. Take a pause on this, take a pause on that. Can't we take a pause? I mean, why do we want to mess with the Comprehensive Wastewater Plan? Why do we need to go so gung-ho? I mean, I know some people here do not think that wastewater is the most important thing, but the chicken or the egg? I heard somebody in the office say that one day, in the clerk's office. What came first, the chicken or the egg? We've got to cure our water problem, but wouldn't we not be exacerbating our problem by doing this? You know, I know we need housing. This is a great program. Thank you, Alexis. Thank you, Evan, for all your work. But just slow this thing down and not talk about upgrading the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan.
Karen, can we just have, just going to have Michaela add something?
Thank you. And in keeping what, with what Karen was saying, as I look at this, knowing that we're probably looking to 2029 when this plan expires. This is a five-year plan, right? Which we are required to submit for affordable housing. And I understand we need more than affordable housing. I support, I know all kinds of housing are important. However, I think this strategy is premature. We won't even have all, we won't even have those homes sewed. Chances are, with the permitting, with the voting, the permitting delays that are pretty consistent, those 1,288 homes probably won't even be going online until this plan is expiring. For that reason, I think the strategy is just premature. I think that we need to move ahead with the sewer, as we unanimously voted to do, and Mashpee residents have been extremely supportive of moving ahead with sewer-ing. Once we do that, I think then we can decide, once we know what our capacity is for effluent, which we, we still don't know. We need to put the effluent back in the ground. We're not sure what the capacity is. We're under state mandate to show progress every two years. I think to put it in a strategy that really looks at something that's five years from now, when the plan expires in five years, is premature. So I have a concern, I have a concern about that. And I would like to say that with regard to barriers, and you're absolutely right, as I was going through, their, their task was to... through, their task was to identify the barriers and then present resolutions to those barriers. I believe that a barrier that should be mentioned probably way up on page 38 is the lack of wastewater infrastructure. That's a clear barrier. And I think that's really important to get in here and to get upfront on 38, because I know when I've attended statewide get-to yes plans, where you're really trying to help people in your community understand the need for affordable housing and how you get people to yes. When I've brought up the issue of sewer-ing, we're unique. So it's not clearly understood that that is our barrier, that is what's standing in our way. It's not the need to have lots of a certain size for any other reason but for sewer-ing. So given the fact, as I said, this is five years out, I would strongly recommend that we identify the barrier as sewer-ing. We then can talk about the way we're working forward to meet that barrier. And that fits in nicely with our first strategy, which we've changed to talk about having wastewater infrastructure in place. So I would revisit this. I think this and some of the other strategies are thoughtful. They're important. I think they'll be really meaningful. But I think they're five years out. I think they come to our next housing production plan. What the state is asking us for in this plan is to show how we're going to increase affordable housing and how we're going to either increase it sufficiently to be at 10% or increase it sufficiently each year to meet safe harbor. And I think for that reason, we should focus on this.
So what would it be if, is, can we just strike Strategy 19? Can we strike it all together?
Before you do that, let me just say one more thing, if that's okay. Strategy 19, as I've already said and Michaela responded to, is intended to address an identified barrier. And it only seeks to accomplish the discussion you're currently having right now with DNR and Board of Health and Sewer Commission. And an adoption of this plan inclusive of this strategy does not change your CWMP, nor does it compel you to do so. It simply identifies the barrier that exists. And I feel like it would be a mistake to not address it directly in the plan, because it's a reality that exists.
May I?
Nope. Michaela, go ahead.
May I? Would it not make sense to put the lack of sewer wastewater infrastructure as a barrier as well?
If it's not clearly...
I don't think it is. And I think that's a clear barrier that the residents of Mashpee, the taxpayers of Mashpee have recognized, and they're moving forward to solve, rather than to look at something that may change the effluent that we're putting in the ground that we still don't know what we have the capacity for. So it concerns me to have it in there at this point in time. And I understand what you're saying. Thank you.
So I think with the barriers, we should go even further and say that our polluted waters are a barrier. Not just that we don't have infrastructure, but that the polluted waters themselves are a barrier. When we see ads in the newspaper from environmental groups with photos of masts in our rivers, right, people know that's from past development. So it's not just, I want to put in that the barrier is lack of enough wastewater infrastructure, but also our polluted waters are a barrier. That gets all into NIMBYism, calls for, you know, bans on any more development. So it touches on it, but it touches on it in such an indirect way. I think we should be forceful with that. The other thing is, I'm fine with striking Strategy 19 and saving that for out years.
Saving that for what?
Out years, in five years.
Beyond the fifth year?
Yeah.
So revisit this after?
I don't think that, and my first thought was, once we meet our nitrogen goals, we would look at, you know, expanding density. But I don't think, the state is not going to reject this plan if we don't have something like Strategy 19 in there. They're not going to. It'll be fine with them. We have enough zoning in there.
I'm indifferent on it.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm indifferent, so I don't know.
You're indifferent?
I mean, at this point, you know.
Well, I think, the way I see it, I see it the way Michaela sees it, we don't know what's going to happen. How many, in other words, what I said at the planning board was rather inarticulate than it was. Where do, how many houses do we build before we cancel out the benefit of this, of the sewer build? You know, nobody knows. Nobody can say, okay, you can build, in five years, you can build 100 two-bedroom or three-bedroom units. I mean, nobody can tell us, because we just don't know.
No, I'm not, I agree with you. There's a lot we don't know.
And the plan is calling for 370 affordable units.
For 10 years. 10 years. We're only talking five years here, 185 units.
Is anybody strongly against striking it?
I don't care if we strike it or leave it in.
So I...
Because the thing is, even if we have the sewer system built, whatever's in the ground now is going to take 20 years to get through. So we're never going to see if the sewer system's working. Look at the nitrogen. It's going to take a while before we really see if this is...
See the benefits. I...
The groundwater goes at one foot a year.
So is everybody...
I'm good with striking it.
Any difference striking it?
I'm good at striking it.
I'm fine with striking it. So where would be the appropriate place to put the language Mary's suggesting? Because I'm also supportive of that.
The barriers, I think it's like around page 38. It's just to, you know, I know it's a housing plan, but it's also part of our comprehensive planning for the town. And we need to be very clear that, when the, I want the state to read this plan and know that we are very concerned about our water quality down here, and we see that as a barrier to housing. They have wonderful plans for housing in this Commonwealth, but not enough good plans for wastewater on the Cape. And I think we need to have it really upfront in our plan that this is a problem for us.
All right. So we'll get back to that as soon as we finish up these...
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Oh, okay. It's on page 38.
So everyone's going with 19, right?
Yeah.
Striking it?
Yes.
Moving on. Capacity, Strategy 20.
Okay. 20. Now Strategy 21 with addition of Strategy 19. Okay, Strategy 19 has been struck. Work with neighboring communities by pooling CPA funds and other revenue to construct affordable housing to meet regional needs, provided the community hosting project formally approves receipt of the funds. We did discuss this. I didn't really quite understand it. And could you explain exactly what this means, Evan?
I might ask Mary to...
Oh, okay. Right. So community, and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Community Preservation Funds can be used in neighboring towns, or maybe towns that aren't neighboring to you.
Our community, our...
Our Mashpee funds can be sent to another town for the purposes of community preservation.
We do that now.
We do that now. We funded the Forward Group home in...
Dennis.
Dennis, thank you.
Yep.
Dennis. And that was, that's for disabled adults. And, you know, you never know, it might be a Mashpee family that benefits from one of those eight units. That's fine. So I've always had this terrible thought of, what if your neighbor, neighboring town wanted to build, wanted to use all of their required money for affordable housing, but in your town, and not in their town, right? So I think it's okay to act regionally with the Community Preservation Program, but just, we need formal approval to spend it in that other town.
Yes, that's all that...
That's all that means.
Because we do it now, it's...
Well, don't we always get formal approval when we do that?
When the forward money went, we did not get like a letter from the Board of Selectment from the town of Dennis that this was okay.
Formally approved in writing?
Yeah. We need to formalize that regionally, that towns are spending their money unwontingly, unwantedly in other towns. You know, that the receiving town of these funds want the money, want the project.
Yes. So you're just saying it's, formalize the process.
Yeah. You know, affordable housing developments, you know, they can be supported by a community for like 15 years, and then all of a sudden, towards the end, there's resistance to it. So it's just important that our neighboring towns are all on board if we happen to spend CPA money in their town.
How does that help our town? Because we're...
Well, we can then say to other towns, you can't, you shouldn't be spending your money here without our approval.
I'm not getting it. I'm sorry.
I don't understand the need, but I don't really care either, either way.
Could you, I've always asked you for a picture.
Let's say there's a town on Cape Cod that has a lot of dilapidated motels.
Okay, like Yarmouth.
Right? And there was a neighboring town that had a homelessness problem and a lot of CPA money, right? And they're the only town on Cape Cod that has homeless shelters. What's to stop them from using their community preservation money in the neighboring town to set up a homeless shelter?
And let our people go there if they're homeless here?
So what would be wrong with that, though?
Well, let's say the host...
The hosting town didn't want it.
Those motels are part of their, is their economic, is their economic and tourist center.
Exactly. There we go. Now you've explained it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I questioned that.
I think there's only two towns on the Cape that that could come into play.
I know.
And one of them is not Mashpee. So...
Right, but you wouldn't want to...
I don't think this matters to me, and I don't think this matters to Mashpee. But I can totally understand the reasons for it, but we're not in that town.
Pushing for it regionally.
I mean, we donate money to smaller affordable housing projects, and usually the host town donates the most, you know, funds, but that's across the board. It's obvious. I mean, this being in here and not being in there, Evan, what's your, I mean, I don't...
If the bullet, the bolded red is new text. The action in totality, that's the only thing that's new. So the action was always contemplated. The only addition is the inclusion of language relative to receipt of the funds by the...
Let's say you have a network of community preservation committees. Shouldn't they be getting the approval of their select board, too?
So if someone wants to give us a lot of money, we want to make sure we get approval, we approve it before we accept it?
I mean, I just think it's a courtesy.
Again, this is, another one, I don't care if it's there or not, but I don't think it's going to pertain to Mashpee at all.
I mean, I guess, Mary, I guess a question for you on this is, just to try to like provide clarity, is this really focused on the situation whereas the applicant of the CPA money is not the municipality?
Right.
So it's a private developer seeking CPA funds to do a project elsewhere that the community that's getting, that's doing the project doesn't necessarily want.
Want it.
So if, you know, presumably that applicant would also be seeking money from that Community Preservation Committee, and that Community Preservation Committee would not be voting to submit an article for town meeting consideration. But I think that's the nuance that Mary was trying to cover.
Oh, no, I totally understand.
Yeah, it doesn't apply to Mashpee.
And again, I agree.
It does apply to Mashpee.
It will not apply, it will not apply to Mashpee. There's just...
The Planning Department does not feel strongly one way or the other on this action. I think it's fine to include.
Does anybody else have any strongly, I'm okay, I'm okay with it the way it is.
Does anybody oppose this? Everyone in favor?
Yes.
Okay, in favor. I want to ask a question about the Cape Cod Commission. I did read, Mary pointed it out to me, and I looked it up, and I don't know why I don't have it here in front of me, but under the section is the draft. Under the section of Mashpee, they are advocating for the language that we struck, which is allowing two-family homes by right in residential districts. Do they preempt us if we don't want that?
No.
If we don't want that, Mashpee doesn't want it, we won't have it?
Correct.
They can't tell us.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So do you want to jump back into, like if someone wants to start from, they have questions from the beginning to the end? Do you want to, Mr. Collins?
I would just suggest to the respective chairs that whatever amendments, revisions, deletions that you've discussed for modifications, that you take a roll call vote in the end, just so that we're crystal clear. And you do have a person, obviously, zooming in. So I would suggest a roll call vote.
Yep.
And Mr. Chair, just one point of clarification, if I may.
Yes.
The goal for my department tonight is to get clarity from each board relative to the edits made, so that we can put the draft in a form that can be posted and advertised for public comment. So your vote tonight to accept any changes, any amendments, any edits, any comments on other sections would be included in an updated draft for the purposes of advertising a public comment, period. You would still need to, subsequent to receipt of those changes and our acceptance of those changes and making the edits as may be necessary, we'll still need to deliver the draft back to you for formal adoption. No vote tonight would be adopting the plan.
Gotcha.
Okay.
So our vote tonight is not a final?
That's correct. I'm really asking you to focus specifically on the strategies discussed. And then if there are any, like the identification of barriers, for example, if there's omissions or things that need to be elevated to a greater place of prominence, we'll want to know that so we can address that in the draft for public comment. I would just want each board to understand that the draft that would be advertised would not be the final draft. And if we get to a point of bringing that final draft back and we go through public comment, and there remain lingering questions or concerns, I would be asking you, at the time of formal adoption, to accept conditionally if there are any minor edits that would be required at the end.
Okay.
You've confused me entirely.
What specifically are you confused about, Karen?
Where am I confused about?
So any vote we're taking tonight is not our final vote?
It's nothing. I know. It's annolity. We don't...
It's not the last and final.
Take any, but when, when will we formally approve something? At what point? How many layers do we have to go through now?
General timeline, in my opinion, subsequent tonight, it would take Alexis and I approximately five business days, one week of work to put the draft in a form that is ready for public consumption.
Okay.
At which point, my department would probably issue a press release, post it online, advertise that the draft is available for comment, send to boards, committees, and commissions to continue receiving that feedback. Now, I would also provide that draft to the select board and to the planning board, so you could further, so we can, you could review how we've dealt with your comments from tonight, and you could provide feedback to us if we missed any details. I would imagine that comment period should be anywhere from two weeks to a month, depending on where we are in our timeframe and what each of you, each board prefers, and be back in February for formal adoption of each, by each entity.
Okay. Do we want to take a look at that paragraph on barriers to development?
I think we should, yes. I certainly want to make sure.
Put anything in that we are interested in right now?
I, yeah, we can do, that's up to you.
All right.
I'm here to listen.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? Evan, have you submitted this to the Cape Cod Commission?
The commission has the draft that you've seen.
Before we can...
I had to submit a draft plan to them for grant compliance purposes.
Of the grant.
All right.
But it's not, it's not the LCP chapter.
All right.
Right. I wanted you all to see what was submitted to the commission, with the caveat that that was submitted for compliance with the terms of our grant.
This goes to the state.
And so to responding to that, to the public comment received earlier, the commission will receive the final draft as adopted for their records.
All right. So can I suggest, does anybody have any, what's the page number that the first change or discussion that you would like to have? What's the page number of, for the discussion?
Further discussion page, I believe we're looking at page 38, barriers.
All right. So she has 38. Does anyone have something below 38? So we're going to go right to 38, and we're going to, because we're going to go through the...
I do. I have on 28.
All right. So do you want, is 28 the lowest page for a discussion? So if you're, if that sounds good, we'll just, I want to just kind of go in order, because I don't want to jump back and forth in the book and page numbers, and we're not going to know what's going on.
28. I just noted that there's a long list of condominiums in town that probably run up to about, you know, 700 units. So I just asked the consultant to add those in. It's like Oak Hollow Condominiums, Deer Crossing, Peasant Run, Quashnet Valley, because those are all, that's on the top of 28 under condominiums. It only had two out of our multitude of... It only had two out of our multitude of, um.
Are there seven hundred and forty-nine total condominiums?
That's what it says here.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think, but, but they only.
You want to enumerate.
They, they only list.
Yes.
You know, they, they don't list Deer Crossing, O'Callo, Pheasant Run, no, there's more, there's, there must be more.
I think they kind of combined them.
I think just, did they just total them?
You want them enumerated?
The seven hundred and forty-nine in Southport.
Oh, all right, so.
Right, and then New Seaberry, but.
Oh, I see.
They don't have, like, Quashnet Valley, which is like, uh, over a hundred units of town housing. So, what she's doing in this section of the, of the plan, she's talking about the housing that we have, right? And a lot of the missing middle, median income housing in town are actually these condominium complexes. Quashnet Valley, Pheasant Run, Pheasant Run, Deer Crossing, O'Callo, so I think that if we're gonna list Windshine, and we're gonna list, you know, Southport, we should list the other ones, too.
Okay, do we know all of them?
The assessor and the town planner can figure that out.
Yeah, it's no problem, I, I, I want to review the methodology for producing the number, the seven hundred-ish figure that's in there. It's, it's an analysis of assessor's records, so assessor's records are imperfect, and I would want to understand why it's only showing the seven hundred and change, when I know that number far exceed seven hundred.
There's, there's over, there's over three hundred just at Windshine.
Right, so how do you want to tackle that, do you want to just say, um, have Evan?
Evan and the consultant.
Yeah, we'll, we'll need to address, um, eh, making the list of condominiums more comprehensive, and then I'll just want to make sure that I understand the methodology for analyzing the assessor's database that produced that, that figure, because it's probably, it's, it's seven, it's just too far off. We'll need to readdress the methodology for the analysis, so that it's more, um, inclusive of the totality of the condos in the town.
Okay.
So we'll work on language on that.
Thank you, and on page, also on page twenty-eight, it talks about apartments. The apartment complexes they have there are, um, affordable, so I thought it was important that they note that. And also that we have some market rate apartments in Mashpee Commons, they're top of the shop, kind of over Pottery Barn and stuff like that.
Yep.
So I, so the consultant said that they would put those, those figures in there as well.
So there would be also a correction made on that, under the apartments?
Yeah.
Okay.
No problem.
That's reasonable.
Everybody good with twenty-eight?
Yes.
What's the next page that anybody has any?
Thirty-eight.
Considerations on? Is it thirty-eight? Anybody?
I had one question on, um, page, I believe it was fifteen.
Oh, are we going back?
Going back.
Oh, David. Sorry.
Uh, is it fifteen, oh, wait.
Yep.
What the hell was it? No, it's page five, actually, on, on the race in ethnicity, um, I, I was wondering why we use the chart that reflects, um, identification of the sole race opposed to, um, a chart that may, you may have chosen more than one race, because in the next page, you know, it identifies as the Mashpee Wampanoag tribe has, um, I think it's six hundred and eighty-four, representing, uh, four point five percent of the town's population, yet on the first, on the page before, it's saying you're less than a tenth of the town population.
Page four, so I've got, you mean, under?
Over here on, um.
So this is Mashpee? Yep.
I'm looking at Massachusetts, oh, all right, all right.
Yeah, you got the, you were in the Massachusetts, but still, you're right, I circled those two, David. Under the table one, race and ethnicity, the percentage of, um, the, and this is from the US Census, the percentage of, um, Native American, Alaska Native alone is two point seven percent.
Right.
And two or more races is five point five percent, but when you turn the page and go to page seven.
Top paragraph.
Top paragraph, those figures don't quite fit in to the description of the tribe.
Right.
So maybe the consultant could resolve that, those, those figures, um, and, you know, the census is self-reporting, and some members of the tribe might be, you know, two or more races, they, you know, depending on what they checked off. But maybe, maybe, uh, when you, when you compare it to the description on the top of page seven, the figures don't quite match, and I wonder if a phone call to the, uh, the tribe's council, you know, uh, could help.
Well, I mean, I, I would prefer seeing a chart that uses, like, minorities in general, in a more general sense, uh, rather than limbing, you can only choose one, and going with, uh, uh, representative figures that do that, because I mean, um, people that self-identify with more than one race, you can, you're probably gonna have higher numbers across the board with all ethnicities, and so I think it'd be more accurately reflecting, you know, what the town's comprised of, um, for me.
So, I assume. Just to understand the, the data, the, there's a, a four and a half percent identification of the town's population as American Indian or Alaska Native, that does not align with the six hundred and eighty-four Mashpee residents, or excuse me. So are we saying that one is more inflated than the other? Because the footnote is indicating that in footnote five, there may be people in Mashpee that identify as American Indian or Alaska Native, but are not members of the tribe.
Right.
So is that, that discrepancy is, is addressed in the footnote, and so I have no issues with how we present the data, I just need more clarity on how we tackle that, I.
I, yeah, I don't, I don't know either, because.
I mean, is there a table that shows, like, I mean, I don't like the fact that you're asking me to pick one, and, like, if you're gonna identify with one thing, what is it? That's, that's diminishing, it's diminishing, it's, 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 you, the numbers reflect it's diminishing, um, just in this, what's captured in the, uh, body of the text.
So we can't.
Even the Hawaiians, I mean.
We can't take that tech, that chart out, because that's from the US Census.
Zero, and I know Trish and Jordan object to that, they're both Hawaiian.
Right, so that's, that's the chart from the US Census, so do you want it to be summarized? And not broken out?
Yeah, I mean, because I don't, yeah, I don't know, you, you take this, and then you go to seven, and it's four and a half percent, I, I.
I'll, I'll discuss this specific issue with, um, the consultant, I mean, I, the, the, the data is taken from the US, US Census. So I, like, I know Trish is Hawaiian, but maybe she didn't participate in the census, I, I don't know.
No, I know, she heard.
So I, I just don't know how to, I don't know how to present the census data in a way that is different than what the census provides to us.
Maybe, maybe David, David can be part of that conversation.
I think it's the fact we're going with the chart that shows, you know, you have, you can only choose one.
Well, that's.
I don't understand.
And maybe, maybe she checked two or more, I, right?
Yeah.
And, and wouldn't the, um.
I don't know.
Wouldn't the bottom total represent the total minority? Because it all adds up.
He wants one? I mean, I know what you're saying, David.
I totally, I just don't know how to think, I don't know how to.
I just don't know if the state.
You'd have to add the two or more races to those numbers.
Right, well, if you were coming down.
To make the numbers even close to working.
How about this line? Does that do it?
That, that's putting everybody who's not.
I guess, I, I mean.
White.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't want to stumble up with, on my whiteness, you know what I mean?
You want to just, you want to just hand it over to evidence, see if you can just.
I think I'll just have to evaluate the data and make sure that we, that if there's any inconsistencies, it's contemplated in the narrative, um, appropriately.
Yeah, I mean.
I get, I get what you're saying, I struggle using that data, too. I do, and I had it circled.
Maybe even adding the four and a half, four and a half percent of the town's population, put it in the narrative below it. I, although it, then it won't, it doesn't jive, but I, you can't, we can't change the census, though.
I think the state would note that we didn't have the census data over there.
That's what I'm saying, so it's gotta be in there, so.
I think they would, but I.
Maybe we just add a.
A narrat, more of a narrative.
Narrative on below.
I'm going, I need to eval, I need to.
That's all.
Take some time to evaluate the question.
Is anybody, are we good with that, Dave, as far as Evan's gonna take a swing at it?
And I'll follow up.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Anybody else? So we're, that's back on five and seven, we're back to?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, and we, we're done with twenty-eight? What's the next page?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight?
Barriers to development.
Everybody's good until thirty-eight?
Okay, so how do we want to rewrite this to reflect, um, let's all read it, we want to reflect what? We've got a wastewater issue, and we've got water pollution.
Yes, right, so you have barriers to development, you have topography, water resources, protected open space, right?
Does anybody have a suggestion?
Can we put it in the top there?
I think we should identify a specific section about wastewater infrastructure and enumerate what we're doing. In the CWMP.
I think it, I think it should say environmental conditions.
Well, it does say, it says while some barriers, such as sensitive environmental areas, it's already in there, or historical resources.
Can't we put it in the top paragraph there?
Just move it.
Top of thirty-eight, where it says barriers to development. It says while some barriers, such as sensitive environmental areas or historic resources can limit development, they also are valuable community assets.
I don't see that in her text as we go through as a bold heading.
We could do like a call-out box, you know, that specifically identifies this issue.
Makayla might have a suggestion.
I, what I was going to suggest is, um, right after, moreover, these barriers are unlikely to change if under special protection, then it starts talking about other barriers. I think I would say upfront, the two major barriers in Mashpee, which are unique, are a lack, are water quality, and however you want to say water quality, and a lack of wastewater infrastructure.
Don't you want to say poor water quality?
Yeah, poor water quality. And a lack of wastewater infrastructure. I think as we're, as we're having the state read this, so we have part of the state through environmental protection that has us under a mandate to make these improvements, you have another part of the state that's going to read this that may have no idea what we're dealing with, and I think that's why it needs to be explicit.
And I, I, I would go as far as saying, you know, the, um, identify it as a critical issue, so a critical water quality issues, you know, um, desperate need for wastewater infrastructure, um, just to stress it and, and call it out, you know. Yeah, I, I agree.
Do we, do we state somewhere in here that we have, we, we are a nitrogen-sensitive area? Where we haven't met our TMDLs? Like, I think we need to put that in there.
Well, it is a barrier.
And put the ni, put those words that the state taught us, right? Nitrogen-sensitive area, and we have not met our TMDLs, and we need to put that real upfront.
Nitrogen-sensitive is in here, um, I don't remember where.
If you just put nitrogen-sensitive, what about the ponds, which are not nitrogen-sensitive, but.
Phosphorus-sensitive.
This program only.
Water quality.
Forever chemical-sensitive.
I don't know where it is.
But this program only identifies nitrogen, really, we're not talking about.
Right, so, 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 right, so Dennis is reminding us we have to talk about the ponds as well.
Do we talk about ponds in this?
I'm not sure.
I don't think so. You just kind of labeled poor water quality. What, what's wrong with poor water quality, lack of wastewater infrastructure?
Nitrogen and phosphorus challenges.
There you go.
Is everybody good with that?
I'm good with that.
Nitro, but phosphorus is not.
What is really needed for this plan?
I, I agree.
But, you know, if you want to include it, it's your.
So did everyone hear that?
No, go ahead.
All right, so we got poor water quality, we're adding poor water quality, highlighting it, and maybe.
Bold.
Put it in bold, Evan?
I think I could do a call-out box right in the text.
There you go.
You look at that first.
Poor water quality, wastewater infrastructure.
Lack of.
Yeah, lack of nitrogen and phosphorus challenges. Good?
Do we have challenges or pollution?
Let's say what it is, a challenge, that's kind of a.
It's a challenge either way.
It's a challenge, but what's, what's the problem with nitrogen?
Put it in as pollution.
Put more nitrogen in the water, that's a challenge you to do that, no.
Pollution, all right, fine, I don't care, that's good. Everybody good with that?
Nitrogen and phosphorus pollution.
Can I clarify something? Um, we were talking about, um, nitrogen-sensitive areas, and I just wanted to say they are there, they're on page forty-four before you get to transportation, and they're spelled out.
All right, we didn't get to forty-four yet, though, all right.
No, I just meant, but they're there.
Are we good with thirty-eight?
I'm not trying to jump ahead.
Good?
Yep.
All right, thirty-eight's done, what's the next page? We go, jump into forty-four, or gone once, gone twice, forty-four? Makayla?
I don't have a change, I just wanted to note that we asked if we use the words nitrogen-sensitive areas, because that's what the state uses, and we, it is there.
Okay.
It's, um, in the paragraph right before transportation, so it does spell it out.
Thank you.
It does.
All right, so, and what's the next page, anybody have any possible changes to? Forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine.
Bingo.
Fifty, fifty-one, you got one?
No, I, I just.
Fifty-three, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four.
I do have a question on forty-eight.
All right.
So special provisions and flexible development, is that under the category of a barrier?
Um, no, this is just an identification of the existing zoning condition. So cluster developments, it talks about accessory dwelling unit bylaws. It's, it's saying what we currently have for, for zoning bylaws that would.
We changed subjects on forty-five.
Say that again, please?
We changed headings on forty-five.
We changed them?
No, 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 we're not, we're no longer under barriers.
Understood, yes, that's correct.
Sorry.
All right, any other pages?
I have one on, a question on fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight.
Um, the last bullet on fifty-eight, when Alexis was here last time, I believe she said that was coming out of there, is that true? Has that been deleted?
Is that the one that talks about striking the bylaw altogether? Yes, so that was an error.
Okay.
That was meant to go, uh, that's the OSID bylaw that we've amended to keep the spirit and intent of the transfer and development rights.
So that's striking, that's gone.
Yes, well, it's modified and in a different place in the plan.
Okay, thank you.
That is now, would be identified as strategy fourteen.
Yeah.
About replacing the OSID bylaw with a new transfer of development rights bylaw that provides for protection of open space.
Thank you.
All right, any else?
We are not, we are not striking OSID, I guess we should be very.
Fifty-nine, sixty, and then what I'll do is I'll.
Oh, fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven, above the, the, a bar that says affordable housing development, it says, note, following our meetings with the planning board and select board and planning board, we will provide additional narratives for each strategy that moves forward, including examples from other communities and other details where applicable. So that's a work in progress, right?
That's a work in, so ultimately, we, there's a fair amount of work that goes into producing, like, these case studies, more or less, so we wanted to have firm clarity on what strategies you'd be endorsing before we go in and develop those, that additional narrative. That would be included in the draft plan that goes to public comment, and you would have the opportunity to see them before adopting the plan.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that it?
I think we've done the job.
All right.
As far as we can go tonight.
So as far as, um, just a quick summary, um, strategy seven, we made the addition of without the loss, correct? And I want to make sure I, without the loss.
Of historic resources.
Of historic resources, great.
And the first bullet point, yeah.
We also.
In compliance with the exist, the existing flow-neutral bylaw.
Yeah, and we, um, deleted or planned infrastructure.
Right.
Okay.
And we've added including wastewater infrastructure.
Okay, and that's all on strategy seven, everybody good with that?
Yes.
All right, strategy eight?
Uh, Mr. Chair, one other item.
Yes.
I have a, I have a note here relative to, now I just have to see where this, uh, relates to. I believe it is for bullet number three, relative to the conversion of single-family homes, specifically calling out, uh, the flow-neutral bylaw, and identifying that any conversion would be operating within the confines of the flow-neutral bylaw.
Yes, thank you.
Good call. So that's it for strategy seven, strategy eight? So, that's it for Strategy Seven, Strategy Eight, we were good as, as it is, right?
Yes.
And then Strategy Nine, same way, Strategy 10, no change.
The striking nineteen.
Strategy 14?
71213, good.
Yep, and then Strategy 19, we were striking?
Yes.
And Strategy 20, we were good?
Yes.
And then we just made those couple corrections, Evan's gonna look at the ethnicity and the-
Census data.
Percentages, right. That were referenced on five and seven, then, I think it was like page 30?
28.
And you need a roll call-
28, correct?
Roll call vote on the changes tonight?
No.
No roll call?
Yes.
Yeah, with, with, that's what we're running down, that's what we're running through all these possible changes first.
Yes.
And then 28 more-
And then 28 was the, with Evan's corrections regarding the condominiums-
Condominiums and the apartments.
And the apartments. And then page 38, poor water quality, wastewater infrastructure, nitrogen and phosphorus-
Sensitive.
Pollution.
Right, pollution.
Right?
Yes.
Good?
Captured.
And I think, was there one more? No, is that it?
Uh, 57, oh, word, yeah, 57.
And then I just made a note that there's more stuff coming, that on page 57, that, that when we see the final, final draft-
That's-
There'll be more details about how each of those strategies, some examples.
Yeah. All right. We need a vote or recommendation to-
So, moved.
Recom, recognizing that this is not the final, final, it would still be helpful for staff to have a roll call vote, that this is what your wishes are tonight as described.
Okay.
Okay.
Kind of a motion, oh, we'll go, go have a second. This is for the planning board, I mean, select board, and then you guys can-
Okay.
All right. Any discussion? Not having any, David?
Yes.
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 Tom?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
Same motion for the planning board?
Yes.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
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 All right.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
You're off, Evan.
I'm gonna come over to the planning board.
Adjourns. Second.
Make like the trees and leave trees, remember trees, don't forget trees.
This motion and a second to adjourn?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, great.
All right, communication correspondence, new business, additional topics, liaison reports, select board.
Want an assembly delegate report?
Up to you.
The assembly delegates are looking at a plant, draft plan for rate increases for the dredge, there was a long discussion about that last Wednesday evening, another discussion in a subcommittee today. The rates proposed actually take the dredge up 135%.
Ooh.
The harbor masters have made what I believe is a compelling argument, that it's too late to do that, it's too late in the year to do that, and that although the dredge does have to be sustainable, we all know that, the plan that the consultants put together makes the dredge sustainable within five years, looking at 135% rate increase now.